Notice of the open meeting. Lots of folks are over there where we might take a look at. Would that will have like to believe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, well, the roll call for minutes. I think we're gonna do this by last name only because they have too many days to be open. Okay, Mr. Burton.
Yes.
Ms. Mike.
Yes.
Ms. Wobenek.
Yes.
And Ms. Hill. Okay, with that, we'll go on to the. Need a motion to adopt the agenda for the evening?
I can make an exception to adopt the agenda.
Well, it'll be named by a number of second names. So, Ms. Wobenek? Roll call, though. Height?
Yes.
Wobenek?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
And then we need a motion to, the next item would be to approve the minutes from February 7th meeting. If there are auditions or corrections. I'll take most. Most of you in the room. I'll say. Thank you. Wobenek?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the next item would be to approve the claims for February of August, uh, two eighth March twenty twenty two.
I'm getting the one second table.
If you're wondering why their P rolls have two different.
Yep.
I feel as if the one that's closest to P roll being to employees is just what employees got. The one that's actually in the column is what it costs for a P roll with all the funding that's access. And you put them all down there because it doesn't solve the cost.
I'll make an option to do. Option made on this. It's okay. Noah?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, this evening will move on then to considerations and provisions for other communications. We have a research today from Cottonwood, which you would like to address this council about civil evacuation procedures and situation.
Yes, we. Thank you. Good evening. I'm O'Mayor Evans and distinguished Fordhamers. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard. My name is Louise Harvey and I am the current director of the Cottonwood Housing Authority here in City of Crofton. Better known as Cottonwood Villa or just Villa. Our property is made up of six block buildings with a seventh building serving as a community laundry and office spaces. There are twenty-four units with twenty-one currently occupied. All of our residents are over eighty-sixty-two disabled or handicapped in some capacity. The average age currently is seventy-three. There are three residents currently on oxygen. Six of the residents are using some type of mobility assistance and one resident is a paraplegic. The villa is completely sustained through electrical power. With no backup generator, unfortunately. In the unlikely event of a power outage, most of the residents will be in dire distress. Our temperatures for this year, as you all know, have been bitterly cold. And in the event of a power outage lasting more than twenty-four hours, is my concern as to where the residents can go to keep warm. Aids individuals with disabilities are more susceptible is coming to hypothermia when faced with extremely cold conditions. At the current time, I'm unaware of any measures in place to address any issues which is, which arise where the villa is concerned. At one point, I was told there were measures in place, but as of late, that information is now conflicted. I'm seeking the aid of the city of Crofton in developing a step-by-step plan factory to include transportation, housing, addressing any immediate medical issues such as the need for oxygen, assistance with moving and supplies to accommodate for the duration of the outage. I have come to understand that Crofton takes care of their own. So, a good plan of preparedness action could go a long way for this community by keeping its residents safe and being able to reassure each resident they are not alone. Would keep, would help to keep everyone in a comfortable state of mental well-being. Also, this plan could be used for other residents living in Crofton who far in mobility and issue. I'm not, I'm sure that a lot more can be said, um, but for now, I thank you for the time and patience in this matter. Are there any questions? Mind you, this would be for, I'm talking about for a twenty-four hour period, longer than a twenty-four hour period. We don't know how long power would be out. I have contacted the, uh, senior not C D D and they said the only thing that they could do is if it goes out, try as best they can to get it back on. Unfortunately, as I said, a lot of these residents that are down there, most of them haven't a lot of, they don't have a lot of family.
Did you, did you guys ever think about getting a backup generator to handle the, the situation down there?
Yes, sir. And, um, that kind of, um, I was working on a grant for it, but was interrupted with that grant, um, for reasons that I can't disclose here. And unfortunately, I missed that deadline in order to get one. I have been since that time, uh, scouring, uh, all types of different, uh, modes or methods to try and find some kind of way to raise up the funds in order to get a backup generator.
Did they do a study and see how big a generator you would need to, to keep electricity and the heat and everything running over there?
It was stop short of that. So, I would not know at this point. I could not give you that information. Uh, give me a couple of days and I'll have it for you.
I agree with that.
So, that, that building was built and put into service in nineteen eighty. And so, and I can reassure you, being a maintenance person there, that doors and windows aren't nineteen eighty.
They're in seventy-eight.
Yeah, when it cools off, it, it, it cools off fast, it, it, there doesn't hold heat very well. So, um, yeah, it's a situation where, you know, in your home, you could probably hang your down and go to the basement and be comfortable. There is no basement, there isn't a place to go.
One of my ru, my seriously biggest fears is that the residents will turn on their stoves in order to keep themselves warm. That is a huge fire risk and that would cause more problems than what we're faced with just power outages. Um, mind you, that is, if there is no power, they can't use the stove. I'm saying that with the temperatures plummeting the way that they are, some of them want to use their stoves in order to keep themselves warm. So, I'm not only dealing with the elderly who are, doesn't have a lot of family, that sort of thing. I'm also dealing with individuals who are struggling to stay independent and don't wanna ask for help. And that's why I stand here because my heart definitely goes out to my residents down here.
So, so how many people are, are actually living in there? I don't really know.
We have twenty-one units occupied.
Twenty?
Yes, sir.
Single, single units?
Single units, yes. They're all one-bedroom units.
So, if we had, God forbid, if we have a, a power outage and it's in winter time and where the city's gotta come up with some kind of a generator if to run their town if we have to. With something like this room here, if we set up cots someplace where it's a little warmer than those rooms that are, you know, not about to, the windows ain't the greatest in there and stuff like that. Something like this with cots and everything in here, would that be a consideration?
That is definitely a consideration. Uh, as I said, I'm just seeking someplace that they can be for a period of time to stay warm. Someplace that they could keep, uh, something up that has the power on if their power goes out down there. If it goes out all over the town.
Well, then we need.
I, 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 I don't know, short of just continuously checking on each individual person, trying to provide as, uh, many, uh, supplies as I most possibly can. But even that would be on a limited, uh, situation. And when I say preparedness, I mean to go through, make a detailed list, look at the number of people that we have in order to supply and then what those supplies would entail. Donna has been so gracious to give me some information which I can glean from it. This is for a national disaster, but I can't possibly glean from this information in order to know firsthand, um, supplies that would be necessary like blankets and, and pillows for comfort, tissue, different, different things that would be needed, plastic bags. Um, try to improvise as much as possible to be prepared. But if the power just goes out down there, but it's on here, definitely that would.
Use this area here, there's a kitchen over there.
Right, that would definitely be.
Feed them there, the blankets and the cots, that's something that we're gonna have to.
Right. That would definitely be a great consideration. And I would not mind, um, moving forward to find out where, where the car, cots are, where the blankets are, that sort of thing. And who do I call first? Um, who's gonna open up the building? Uh, tho, those types of questions I believe needs to be answered before it happens. I wanna have all my ingredients for my taco ready so that when it does happen, I can just put it together.
If you could give us a list of just what you said.
Okay.
Give a board, some kind of idea what we need to, I mean, we got storage up. I don't know if that's his place, but I mean, the, the stage could have, we don't know where we're gonna store them yet. But maybe we could get a, a plan together with your help, knowing what you have to have to keep.
Sure.
Everything going. But that is if that place was out powered.
Right.
This is place without power.
Then that's something different.
Then we, then we gotta do something different.
Right. And that becomes like considered a disaster. And then I guess this, uh, would kick in, but this is from twenty eighteen.
It's future.
So, it needs to, it needs to be updated, revised, that sort of thing. Right. Any other questions?
I mean, the transportation, if we had to get them from here to here, I'm sure we got, you know, we got school buses out here. I don't know how handy it would be for elderly people. I think everybody would help try to get people transported up here if that's the case.
I did basic, I did, um, speak with Katie Tramp for a, a real brief, uh, moment. And she said that the first, the rescuers would not have a problem in transporting those individuals who are in need of oxygen because, you know, they would have a portable, but that's a limited time. So, she said that that would not be a problem. I have not spoken to her again since that initial conversation. But, um, it is a conversation that, um, I definitely can have with her again so that we can put that into place. Um, but again, step by step, you know, again, who do you call? Um, how do we get it going? How do we get it open? How do we get it set up? That sort of, that sort of situation. And who would be a second in case I'm not here for whatever reason? Um, I don't usually go places, but you never know. Um, so, you know, where, where would a second, who would be the second to be able to come in and take care and handle the situation?
So, I think if you gave us a, a list of everything that needs to be transitioned, of course, we need, we need cots for beds, we need blankets and, you know, and food. But we have a console, we got a wire awakening this year because it's, it's cold.
Right.
It's very cold. We haven't had that for a couple of years, so we're kinda just skin by the teeth here that we're gonna get through this. That's a good point, though. So, I think if you give us a, a list of the stuff that you would think that you would need to keep these people from hypothermia and stuff like that, I think it'd be a great help.
Sure, I can do that. And I will turn it into Donna then or?
Um, if it's all right with you, we have a working relationship already and have contact information. If you give that information, we'll disseminate it to everybody else if that's okay with you.
Sure.
If that's right with you.
Sure, I can put something, uh, together and we'll see how it. Just to reassure the residents that there are individuals in place that have their best interests at heart and that they would be taken care of. Um, especially my one fellow, the paraplegic, I am very concerned with he is concerned because he doesn't, he's not mobile for at, at all.
For him, you would just call EMS.
Excuse me?
For him, you would just call EMS.
Yeah, I would hopefully that, that would be, you know.
Larry, do you remember, did we ever get a generator?
Now, that's been years back when they done that and everybody just kinda lost interest.
You talked about.
They was planning on setting one up back here.
To run this, this building.
This one there probably or this building. They've got full fire, full fire halls in this building here.
Yeah, that's, could be something that we could re-investigate too and to.
Well, and as I said, I am doing some research to try and find a grant that would, um, afford us the funds in order to get a generator, backup generator in place. But as of right now, I mean, there's so many tons and tons of stuff. So, it's a slow, kind of a slow process having to read through everything to try and find where that could be a possibility. And at this, and I welcome any, um, outside help with the situation. If anybody knows of a grant or something that can be, um, that can be applied for, I would definitely welcome it. Right now, I'm mainly looking at what the Housing and Urban Development have available. And, uh, not having too much left, but you never know, just keep, just keep looking.
Mr. Jason, you have something that?
Yes, uh, if I could speak. It, uh, probably won't help much this year, but the tri-county hazard mitigation program, uh, has this option for us. Uh, for the city, Cottonwood, uh, for the sewer plant, I mean, if you need a generator, there is that possibility. But it's not probably gonna happen even if we get the application in for this year. So, that's a possibility.
That's good to know. So, it, but still in the meantime, in between time, contingency plan would definitely reassure, um, give my residents peace of mind as well as myself. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, the next thing would be unfinished business and that would be, you know, big advertising of Omaha lots. Those poor lots were advertised last week and they'll run continuous for the next three.
Two more.
Two more weeks. At that point in time, we'll be able to make a decision based upon the bids that we have and so on. Any questions about that? If not, the next item on bid division is fire hydrants.
Would you give me a price number?
Uh, I asked him about it, he hasn't gotten back with it yet.
Okay.
So, we'll just table that until next time?
I can keep trying to get hold of.
Yeah, I have two of the stuff and then, then you will get something.
Okay.
Do you have, do you have a number of them on that, that pays attention or, I mean, we have a number of how many?
Um, we've got a list in the office. There's about eight or ten of them altogether, I think, too.
There's ten.
Okay, so we'll have further discussion about that other time when we get more information. Fair enough. Okay, moving on to items of new business. The first item of new business would be Steve Parr with the Streets Superintendent Engineer, has some documentation.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Steve Parr with J. Y. O. G. S. All these groups up. We've got a lot of handout material. I think I've got everybody's pretty well organized except for Donna. And Polly does, isn't that fine? But you've got all the information, so. I've got a lot of stuff I just wanna touch base with, uh, you all on and then I'm sure we'll have further discussion on this stuff. Uh, the first thing is, I just wanted to, if you haven't seen this, uh, back in October of two thousand nineteen, I think that's right, or two thousand twenty-one, excuse me. Uh, we, uh, the, the city hired a geotechnical firm to do coring of all the streets in town that are on concrete to see how, you know, what, what's the material, asphalt, how thick they were. And basically, what we tried to do was have every block have three cores. Uh, one near the edge on each side of the street and one in the middle, just so we had an idea of like, well, how thick is this existing material? Uh, and so, a lot of information in here, uh, there's recommendations and we'll kinda touch on that. Uh, but I just wanted to make sure that you all have a copy of that and in your free time, you can kinda look at it and so. Um, but basically, if you wanna look, uh, go to the second handout. This was something that we put together, um, that I sent to previous mayor and Larry. And, uh, what this amounted to is just kind of like a summary of, of the both, of the coring. It basically, the existing bituminous surfacing, whatever you wanna call it, uh, between the curb and gutter, the streets for those curb and gutter probably is, in, in most cases, is not thick enough to do what I would call a milling overlay. So, in other words, mill down like a couple of inches and then put a lift of asphalt. There's just not enough thickness there to do that. And one thing we don't, our recommendation, we don't wanna do with any streets is overlay into the gutter line because all we're doing is, uh, overlaying, uh, potentially drainage issues and then you're taking up capacity for drainage in the gutter line. So, so, uh, this is kind of just a summary of what the report says. Which streets, if you look at the last sheet there, there's a map. It's a street surfacing map. And so, the, the streets that, um, we marked with an X on are potential streets that there could maybe be, be, be a milling overlay. Otherwise, the other streets in town, like where there's curb and gutter, uh, probably need to have a complete reconstruction, uh, either putting in asphalt or concrete in between the existing curb and gutter. Just driving around looking in the past and today a little bit where I could see it, really in the curb and gutter section, seem like they're probably in pretty good shape. Um, there might be a few sections that maybe would have to get replaced, but it appears most of the curb and gutters in good shape, so. Once again, it just kinda summarizes, you know, what the report, what the report is saying, so. Uh, so, that. Uh, the next thing, um, this is just, uh, this, this map. This just basically shows the different types of surfacing on all the streets. So, the, uh, kind of pink color, that's asphalt overlay, asphalt paving, that's the dark blue, asphalt paving with curb and gutter. Uh, that's the yellow. Uh, the bituminous, uh, like rural section road, that's in blue, uh, bituminous with curb and gutter, uh, that is the orange. So, the one, the yellow, that's really the highway going through town, which you're not responsible for. But would be the, the ones that are orange, those are the streets in town where there's bituminous asphalt surfacing between the curb and gutter. And then the, uh, the green is where you've got concrete, concrete paving. So, I just, uh, it gives you a visual of what, what you've got for the, the streets in town. Okay. Um, the next thing was, uh, once again, this was a, in the past, an email to Larry. Uh, he had asked like, well, you know, what's the process to maybe do some street, street work? So, I just kinda outlined a summary of like what that would look like, so I'll just kinda touch on it. Obviously, the first thing is meet, which we're doing tonight, you know, to talk about this, over the pavement coring. And then, uh, uh, you have the opportunity to give us, uh, some direction as to maybe which streets you wanna look at first. Uh, then we could put together a cost opinion. Uh, we could forward that cost opinion to your fiscal agent, uh, to review and determine what kinda capacity you have to borrow money to build a project. If that's, if you wanna borrow the money. Um, we would, uh, then if you decided to move forward, you would, uh, have to take some action. If you're gonna borrow money, we create a district or districts. Uh, and then, once you get to that point, uh, we would get an agreement to you for doing plans and specifications and bidding the project, that type of thing. Uh, and then taking the, you know, advertising for bids, going through, uh, the construction of it and then obviously final project closeout. So, kinda went through that quickly, but that, those are just kinda the steps. If you would decide you wanna move forward with some type of, some type of, let's figure through the project, so. Really, the main thing, uh, you know, in kinda summary is other streets that you wanna do, what kinda cost are you looking at? And then, how are you gonna pay for it? Those, those are probably the things. And maybe identifying it, you know, which streets first, right? So, I mean, you've got a lot of streets that could use some attention, so. Okay? Uh, the next thing is this sheet here. So, this is just where you, you're getting some, where you're getting some money. So, the first one is your highway allocation money. And so, uh, what's projected for this next year is about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. That comes from the state, uh, from gas tax money, most of that. And that's based on, uh, every municipality, uh, gets money, uh, this highway allocation money and to different amounts. And it's all based on your population, your lane miles and your motor vehicle registrations. That's what they use for the formula. So, obviously, larger cities are gonna get more money, smaller cities are gonna get less money. Uh, the second page, if you look at that, that is, um, the motor vehicle fee. And so, last year, Cross, Crofton received a little over seventy-seven hundred dollars in, uh, motor vehicle fees. Uh, and that, once again, that comes from the state. And then the, the last item that's highlighted there, the forty-five sixty-three, four thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars and change. That, that's money that comes from the Build Nebraska Act. And so, that comes from the state as well. And so, all of those monies you're getting, the highway allocation money, uh, one of the requirements of that, that hundred and eleven, what you should get this year is about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. You've gotta match that locally with twenty-five cents on the dollar, okay? And that money, the highway allocation money and that match can only be used for street improvements. So, it can be used for maintenance, it can be used for, um, paying salaries for your street department people, um, materials, uh, concrete, asphalt, those types of things. But it has to be related to streets. So, an example is you cannot use this money to build a water line, for example, okay? So, it has to be related to streets, so. Any questions about that? Okay? The next handout is this one right here where there's some highlighting on it. Okay, so what I did was, it was like, just to get kind of a starting point. And I, I had talked to Larry about like, well, is there any idea of which many streets you'd be looking at? And he said, well, maybe over by the church and the school. So, what I did was, I just put together a very, very positive, just to give you an idea of what kinda dollars you're looking. just to give you an idea of what kind of dollars you're looking at for potentially doing street, street work. So, uh, I put together a cost opinion for Fifth Street, um, from the highway.
Grab my nap here.
So Fifth Street from the highway north to Iowa, and then Iowa Street, um, from Fourth and Fifth, and then Fourth Street, uh, from the highway up to Iowa, just to give you an idea, so those three blocks. Those three blocks are fairly wide, um, I think the, the East Block, Fourth Street, is between the curb and gutter is like forty feet. Uh, Iowa Street, I think is like forty-two, and then, uh, Fifth Street over by the church and the school, that's about fifty feet wide. So those are really wide streets, those three residential streets are probably about thirty-one foot width, right? So these are a little bit wider, but just to give you an idea, if we took the existing, uh, street surfacing, the asphalt bituminous surfacing out, it's a summary of that work, put back like eight inches of asphalt, uh, and, uh, didn't do anything, but they did the curb and gutter, uh, and then assumed, we assumed about a ten percent contingency. And that's just like, there's things that we don't know yet, that they have to get, deduct a bit, bunching it into the design. And then we put a, like, twenty percent overlay cost, and that's just like a rough number to take care of like engineering fees, legal fees, publication, geotechnical, we come up with about an eight hundred and twenty thousand dollar project. So to do about three blocks, during that seven to eight hundred thousand dollar range, if there's curb and gutter, three, three paid those streets, I was assuming eight inches of asphalt, which probably, uh, around the school with bus traffic, you probably would need your residential streets, uh, where there isn't that kind of traffic, you'd get a lot of like seven inches, so just kind of depends on the traffic, whether that's asphalt or concrete. Once again, I just assumed asphalt at this point, uh, concrete is going to be a little bit more expensive, uh, but that's always something we do. So just to give you an idea of what that would be. So what I did was, I got, I forwarded that information to Brett Slaughter with Icarus Sandler, and I think maybe some of you know him, I think he's been up here, but anyway, he works for, uh, a bonding company, so a fiscal, he, he's a fiscal agent. So he helps municipalities bond street project. You know, so you can borrow money, uh, to build a project, and then there's a debt service that you'll pay, pay that debt off if you don't have the funds, all of the funds to build the project. So about an eight hundred and twenty thousand dollar project, the debt service for fifteen years, based on current interest rates, which are about four point six percent, uh, the debt service is about seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars to build that kind of project. Did he kind of relay that over a fifteen year period for every, uh, so for about a million dollars, uh, you'd probably have about a hundred thousand dollars in debt service over a fifteen year period to get that money off, okay? Um, the other thing that relates to is, uh, so like, where's the money going to come if you pay off my debt service? So just as an example, if you, uh, did a project of that size and decided that the debt service was going to be paid off by, uh, property tax increase, the impact of that, of seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollar debt service is about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars per year per hundred thousand valuation. So that's what if you decided to do a project and pay the debt service off of the property tax increase, that would be about a hundred and eighty hundred dollars per hundred thousand dollars valuation. Let me spread out to all the property taxes, okay? That doesn't mean you have to go down that direction, but that, that's what that would look like, so. Another thing to be aware of is that, so when you put together your budget every year for your operational budget for the city, you've got a lid to deal with, right? You can only go up so much. If you bond street work, that is, this is completely separate from your normal operating budget if you decide to bond the work. So you can do that without affecting your, uh, normal property, okay? So once again, it's just to give you an idea of how do you pay for the project, what does that look like, okay? And then the last sheet was, there's a lot of information here, but I, what I wanted to highlight, uh, what I was trying to highlight there was that right now, you have a, uh, I believe you have a one, one cent sales tax, right? Okay, so, uh, that is generating, uh, over the last, I think Terry Meyer worked that over the last four years, uh, or three years, that's generating over a hundred thousand dollars a year in, within that sales tax, okay? So, uh, that's what it's generating. If you wanted to, uh, you could bump that up another half cent, you'd have to put that to a vote of the people, but that's what I highlighted in pink, so an additional half cent of sales tax, which you get, you like another half cent, that would generate, should generate over fifty thousand dollars, which once again, you could potentially designate that for street improvements, okay? It's just an idea cost. You actually could go up another half cent, but that is what I highlighted below there. You, you would have, once again, you'd have to have a vote of the people, you would have to enter into a interlocal agreement with another political subdivision, uh, not that they would really, not that that political subdivision, uh, would have the obligation, but it just requires you to have that interlocal agreement, uh, and then you, once again, you could use that for street improvements. How would it be easier, maybe a little bit easier, maybe just go that half cent and designate, you know, designate it, so. So, in summary, you might want to write this, write this as numbers, okay? So you get, you've got your high, you've got your highway allocation money, a little bit, and I'm just going to round these down, be a little bit conservative, so right now, for highway allocation, a hundred and ten thousand dollars, right? Your, your sales tax, your one percent sales tax is generating over a hundred thousand dollars, and my understanding is that sixty percent of that is to be used for infrastructure. So if you take sixty thousand, sixty percent of that, you've got sixty thousand dollars that could potentially be used, uh, for street work. Your motor vehicle fees, uh, this last year was about seventy-seven hundred dollars, so you can write that one down. And then that Build Nebraska Act is about forty-five hundred dollars. Your highway al- I think I said the highway allocation, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So if you took, uh, the local match and matched that, uh, twenty-five cents on the dollar, that'd be twenty-seven thousand six hundred dollars. You add all those numbers up, and you've got about two hundred and ten thousand dollars that you could say is in your street fund, okay? Now realizing you've got some op- normal operating expenses that probably come out of there, I don't know what those numbers are, you probably have a better handle on it, but that, that tells you kind of where you're at as far as what revenue you've got coming in to your, potentially into your street fund, right? Without nothing else. Now if you added, if you did put that up to a vote of the people for increasing the sales tax a half percent, or another, yeah, another half cent, that would generate another fifty thousand dollars, so that would bump you up about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So now you've got about over a quarter of a million dollars potentially to spend, spending your street fund for just normal operations, but also maybe doing some projects, so. Point being is, you do have limited monies, to do any size of project of any size, you know, you're going to be in that three quarters of a million, million dollar range, so it's really tough for most communities, any community, especially a community of your size, to, uh, have money in the bank, so to speak, just to pay for a project outright. And really, to do a project, you really may need to have something of some size and get some piece of bids. So, uh, if you would ask me, I would say, really, you probably, if you do want to do a street project, you probably should be looking at maybe three to four blocks, so you're probably in that million two range possibly, depending on, uh, you know, uh, which blocks you pick, how wide, if there's, uh, some storm sewer to build, those types of things. But that's probably about where you want to be, it could be less than that, three blocks, four blocks, something like that, but that's, that's where you want to be. Uh, to try to, uh, tackle street improvements and only spend, example, like, only your highway allocation money, it, you're just, it's not going to happen, you know, it's just, it'd be like trying to, well, when you bond a project, it's kind of like buying a house, for example, right? You've got a mortgage, you know, you're going to pay it down, right? And then once that gets paid down, or you get to a certain point, then you do another project, and you just kind of start chipping away. You've got a lot of streets here in town that probably need some attention, you got to start somewhere, right? And so you just kind of pick, pick a location and say, okay, let's do these three or four blocks, if that makes sense. My thought is, like, if you can kind of group them together, that makes sense, because then the contractor's going to be working in one area. You know, so for example, this is just an example, but maybe Fifth Street, for example, from the highway going north past the school, because the school lots of activity, and the church there, and maybe going a couple blocks all the way up to Bain, because that section of roadway isn't in very good shape. Maybe even going south across the highway down to Omaha Street, but now you've got a long run in there, even though you've got the highway, uh, that intersection's done, you've got the intersection at Iowa that's done, so you're kind of filling in between. That's just an example, doesn't mean that it has to be that way, but kind, that could maybe be a project, or maybe it's somewhere else too, but. My opinion is, if you want to do some street work, try to concentrate on, uh, maybe the streets that are in worse condition, but maybe the ones where there's the curb and gutter already, because you're going to get more bang for your buck. It just, the drainage is basically taken care of with curb and gutter, now all you're doing is filling in between.
So what do you, what do you do when you have no curb and gutter on some of our streets?
Well, you can over, like, some of those streets, you could over, you could do an overlay on those, probably a two or two and a half inch something overlay, and now you've built that up, and those are actually probably fairly easy to do, but you've got to make sure that there's drainage away from them. So there are some places where it's like, oh, it's obvious, you know, the roadway is, it's like a rural section road, which you'd see out in the county, so it's built up, and then the water's going to run off, that's no problem. There's a few places where it's like, ooh, where does this water go? Because you've got to get it away from the street, so those are doable too, you know, you're, you're only doing the two, two and a half inch lift over there, you're going to get a lot of, you can get a lot of streets done too. So once again, it's, you know, you're, you have to determine, uh, you know, which ones you want to do, what, what's your priority?
Is there a chance, you know, uh, pavement is even with the road, and there's a lot of them in town here, to take a, the grater and grater trench and let it drain in the right direction? Would a guy do that to get that?
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's a way to, to do it, right? We just have to look at it, like, how do we get the water away?
Drain away from the road.
Yeah, you don't want it, yeah, you don't want it along the edge, absolutely, so. Going back to the, you know, also before I forget, just going back to the sales tax thing, once again, this is just my opinion. The nice thing about, well, nobody likes taxes, right, so, but the one thing, I think a positive thing potentially about the sales tax is you are capturing, uh, monies that are coming in from outside, you know, people that are you, you know, coming in, buying things here, using your streets, so that, or that is kind of an advantage, I guess, maybe possibly doing the sales tax. But once again, there might be some people that would argue that point too, so, but, the point being is, you got to have, you've got to have a revenue source to pay for this stuff. I dumped a lot of information, I'm not a pod, I mean, it's just, there's just a lot of stuff to talk about. This is kind of a starting point, right? You've got some ideas, some numbers, you've got information on your streets.
Is there a minimum streets that you get companies to come in, where they come in and do two streets, or they have three, a number that you got to have?
Usually it's the, it's the dollar, you know, like, in your case, I would say, three or four blocks you'd want to do. So you've got some size to it, because it's a matter of, so like, when a contractor comes in and does work, you know, there's, there's a cost for them to bond, they've got to have bonding insurance, there's mobilization cost for them to come in and do the work. So the, the bigger the project, you're spreading that, those costs, which are kind of fixed, so to speak, over a larger project size, so. A larger, you get to a certain point, then you're, you're taking advantage of, uh, economy and scale, uh, so. The bigger the project, the better, the better. To try to do like one block at a time, you're going to, it's going to be expensive, because the unit prices are going to be higher, and you've got those moving costs, where you get to a, uh, you know, a million dollar project, then you're probably going to get some decent prices. And unfortunately, in today's world, you know, half a million dollars, just when you're just talking about infrastructure work, this isn't buy a lot, this is, all, all this stuff's expensive, so. What you want to do is build it right, so it lasts a long time, I think that's the key thing, so. Any questions? Uh, one thing, I think, uh, also, uh, one thing that, uh, gets asked a lot of the time, like, well, is there any grant money? Okay, well, usually on street type projects in, uh, towns of your size, uh, there are, uh, see, community development block grant funds that you can go after. Unfortunately, there is a, uh, you have to meet the lower moderate income threshold, and that threshold is more than fifty percent of your household has to meet that income, and you're only at like about thirty-five percent, so you just, you don't meet that, uh, meet that threshold, so. Really, for doing municipal street work, there just isn't any grant money to do that. Now, water sewer, that's a different story, uh, but street projects, uh, there just isn't a lot of that. Except, possibly, um, if you wanted to ever do something in your downtown area, um, that might be a possibility, if you get some funds to do a downtown project, for example. In your case, it would probably be, um, because there's other communities like you that don't meet that lower moderate income threshold, it would be to get rid of what, uh, they call architectural barriers, so like, uh, intersections that don't meet ADA requirements, or steps going in the building, eliminating the step, steps going into building, that's eliminating architectural barriers, there is some funding for that, so. Downtown projects are really expensive, because usually you're tearing everything out, building to building, potentially. Not saying you'd have to do that.
But does a, does a business people, say if I had a business uptown, I had a, a step curb and a step going on my business, is a home, is a business person responsible for that, for that section of property, yes?
I think the, I think I'm right on this one. I believe that if you have a business and there is a, uh, a step going in there, I think you are responsible to make sure that, uh, there is access, ADA access if you're building.
So what about that?
So that, that would, that would fall on the business side, right?
Even that section there, that uptown, we got some spots, it says you got a, where the car parks is like a six inch step going on the concrete, now what's that, that's a city's?
No, I mean, you can have that, as long as there's a route, for example, so I'll, I'll use the example of like someone in a wheelchair, right? So what you're supposed to have is that there are intersections or someplace, uh, handicap parking, right? And then they should have access at the intersection location to access the site.
Zero entrance, or?
Yeah, yeah, so that's kind of the key. Doesn't mean you can't have steps, but you want to have a path, so someone might, for example, in a wheelchair, uh, has a clear path to get into that building, right? Now, you, there's lots of buildings everywhere that have steps into them, and people just deal with it, right? I mean, there's, I don't think the, uh, the ADA police, for example, there is no police, but that whoever's in charge of it, they're not out looking. But if somebody complains about it, like, if someone would complain here, I'm not saying you have an issue here, that they can't get into this building, you probably need to deal with it, because it's public, you know, you have meetings in here, that type of. So like, public places, you want to make sure they can get in somehow, like libraries, communities. you wanna make sure they can get in somehow, like libraries, community centers, if it's city owned, those type of things, so. I'm kind of going off in a tangent, a different direction. That's a whole nother conversation, how you deal with ADA's.
That's just up, that's just up the main street where there's.
Yeah, yeah. As long as, as long as you've got a, uh, there's a path for people to get that, uh, are disabled, then you're okay. I think most people understand that you, you know, that are in that situation, so, anyone? Kind of go off on the things, so. Any questions? Anything else, you know, anything else, any questions you have for me, or? I guess another thing just to mention is that, you know, the, uh, the surfacing of streets typically, uh, it's either gonna be asphalt or it's gonna be concrete, right? Um, concrete is gonna be a lo, uh, a little more expensive than asphalt, but concrete's gonna last longer. You know, you're gonna get, in most cases, unless there's like, really heavy truck traffic on it, you're probably gonna get at least fifty years out of a concrete street, with probably not much maintenance, other than, uh, maybe you're gonna be seeing the joints. An asphalt street, um, probably when you get to, um, ten to fifteen, probably around that ten year mark, you're maybe gonna have to do a, uh, some type of, some type of a sealer over it, or like a chip seal, just because the, the sun dries that surface out. It like, dries the oil out, and then it starts to kind of, you start seeing the aggregate. And so what you do is you put a chip seal over the top of it to kind of reseal it. But usually an asphalt street, you're gonna probably get, depending on what kind of traffic's on it, uh, how you take care of it, you should get twenty-five plus years out of it before you have to do a milling and overlay. But the milling, the milling overlay, overlay is probably like, two inches. Because you've got, if we put like, for example, seven or eight inches, you've got a good base there, and that's gonna be in good shade. Do you mill off two inches? You do a, you know, a, a lift of over, or a lift of asphalt over, so. Once again, we can look at both of those options.
So for us to figure out where to start, what roads to start with, we gotta contact you, because you've got all this information on the cords and everything else.
You just have to.
Give you an idea?
Give me an idea, like, which streets are you looking at? I mean, for example, like Fifth Street, if that is like, oh, that might be a good stretch from wherever, whatever, I'll put together a cost opinion, and then come back and revisit that, if, if that looks like that's what you wanna do, so. You just have to give us an idea of like, which streets, and we'll try to put together a cost opinion for you.
So how does it work if we're thinking about increasing the tax to do a street project? And then we decide to do another project, like a pool, and that would increase the tax also?
Well, you only have, you only have so much, uh, you can only increase your sales tax so much.
Right.
So, right, so, right, so if there is a, a pool, a pool project, for example, or another project, and you're looking at having a, uh, a half cent tax for that, then that would probably take this out of that, this equation, right? Because you're limited, I believe the max you could go is that two percent, and then that last half percent, you have to get someone else to go in with you. Uh, not really sure why that is, because they really don't have any, uh, obligations to do anything, it's just you have to join another entity, so.
So maybe do one, the road project, and then a different project? You couldn't do them both at, on the same?
Well, I think, well, if you, let's say, right now you have the one, one cent, let's say you decide to have a half cent. You could, if, if the public was okay with that, and, and voted that in, I think you have to determine like, wh- where is that gonna go? You know, where's that half cent gonna go? And you can be somewhat broad, it's like, infrastructure, recreation, pool, whatever you want it to be, and then it can be fun with whatever you want it to go. The same thing with the next half cent, right? Um, but, yeah, you're gonna, yeah. I, I don't know if I answered your question. But if you designated, like, if you said this, this next half cent, it's gonna go for infrastructure or streets, that's where it's gotta go, right? Unless you put a sunset to it. Like, for example, there's been some places where they, uh, the sales tax increase imposed to pay for a swimming pool, okay? Once that swimming pool gets paid, got paid off, then I think the sale, that sales tax goes away, then. If it's specific for that. So it's kind of like alerting on that, how, how you want that set up. Just have to be careful what, how you, how you set that up, you know, so you don't, uh, like, oh, I wish we would have added that in to whatever, so. Yeah, I, if you want more detail on that, we can help you with that, through, uh, Terry Meyer, get him out.
Speed?
Yes.
Asphalt, compared to how thick concrete, thick inches, feet inches?
Uh, usually on residential streets, we're looking at like, seven inches. If it's heavier truck traffic, uh, depending on the amount of truck traffic, for sure, eight or nine inches, probably, whether it's asphalt or concrete. Uh, like, for example, that, uh, Fifth Street from the highway south, that's where grain traffic goes through there. We'd wanna know what that looks like, as far as like, what's the peak day, and how many semis are going down that street, to make sure that that, that asphalt is thick enough to handle, or concrete, whatever the paving is, is thick enough to handle that kind of traffic. And then the other thing along with the paving section is the subgrade prep. I mean, either the soil, the compaction of that, to make sure that that's done properly, because, uh, the paving is only gonna perform as good, as good as what's underneath it. So that's a key thing, too. You just can't put that stuff down on, unprepared subgrade. Okay, any questions? If not, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. If you need something else, let me know. You got my number, email address?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thanks. Oh, uh, I do have one request. Uh, when I was here this afternoon, uh, Dawson, Dustin, I'm sorry, Dustin, help me. Would it, would it be okay, there's a, a copy of, of your water map, sewer map, and then the street map? Would you be okay to trust me that I could take these and get them scanned, and then I'll bring them back? And then we'd have an electronic copy of those? Because we really don't have anything at this point in time. I guarantee I'll take good care of them, I'll bring them back to you, if you're, if you're okay with that, so. If you really don't have, I don't think we have an electronic copy of them. This way, we can get that to you, and then you, you would have a PDF of, of these maps, so. You okay with that?
Yeah, it's good, yeah, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Say, now, I'd like to, before Mr. Wilkins gets up and talks, I wanna make a motion to rescind our vote that we had last month. We just, we only heard one side of this water thing. We have a, the other side before we do anything like that again. Gotta make a motion to rescind the vote.
I guess, in an effort to collect information, we have that, and then, after, well, yeah, I guess we'd have to then have a, an agenda item to rescind that vote at the next, right? That's great. But we, we're gathering information now, and we, we heard from one entity in the process, and we need to hear the information. That's up to you, if you want to, that's fine.
Yeah, it'll be up to you. It is up to you.
Yeah, okay. With that, Mr. Wilkins, would please enlighten us?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we kind of work as a team, so I can speak, too, is that okay?
You're always welcome.
Can I use your table as a?
Sure.
I brought everything but my kitchen table, yeah. I have some things to lay out here. Mine's Rita Wilkins. I guess I'll give a little, why, how we got here tonight was, I read in your last month's meeting minutes that you were, had some information from the Cedar Knox Rural Water Project, and I missed that on the, uh, agenda that was listed in the paper. But, uh, as Mayor Bob explained, was that, uh, he had got on after it was already in the paper, which is perfectly legal within, uh, twenty-four hours before your meeting. So, uh, if we would have known, we would have came that night, but that's okay. And then I asked Mr. Evans, Mr. Mayor here, if he would give us a chance to present our site, and he said yes, so thank you. Okay. I drew this, I, I don't know if I, if you want me to read this, or if you wanna go ahead and read it, and, and go along, I'll present what I have for, to go along with this. Is there?
Pick out some highlights for us, if you have.
Okay, okay. Um, I guess it's, as you deliberating your support for the Cedar Knox Water Project, we want you to please consider that this location for this well source that we feel is not the best location for this project. The area where this groundwater source is being proposed is designated as livestock friendly. The immediate area of one of the proposed groundwater wells neighbors the largest cattle feeding business in Knox County, and five yards are within three miles of one of the proposed quality source wells. Two operating hot confinement, as well as a chicken egg laying confinement farm, are all within miles of both of the proposed quality groundwater wells. And nitrates are a big concern. Nitrates come from the door fertilizer. Our well, that lies between the two well sites, is tested for nitrate by the NRD. If you look at your next page, there is a copy of the letter that was dated March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, from our Lewis and Clark NRD. That well of ours showed that our nitrate level was high, and as you can read there, this well of ours sits two miles north of one of the proposed groundwater well source, and the other groundwater well source is within three miles of that same well. The UNL chemigation test instructor that, um, Craig goes through to take a test to apply chemicals in January, he said that the nitrates can travel miles and miles, and they can contaminate clean water wells. So eventually, we feel that this water project, they will not be able to control the nitrate levels. So you, everyone will be paying for water that you're still gonna have to boil. We are not the only ones with nitrates. When they explained this program to us, they told us that they tested several other wells in that area. They either didn't have the high velocity, or they were high in nitrates. The water from these wells are going to be pumped three hundred and sixty-five days a year, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. Farmers in our area are concerned there will be years to come, farm wells will be going dry, water springs and running streams that supply farm dams for livestock will dry up. Wetlands used by waterfall and pheasants will no longer exist. Most of the domestic wells in our area have experienced much stress in the recent drought years. Some need two wells for domestic use. In December of two thousand twenty-two, our local NRD adopted a one hundred and eighty-day stay of high-capacity well construction, which means no one can dig a new well in the Lewis and Clark NRD area, because they have been testing their test, their wells, and they have been found that it is lower. Much lower than average rainfall and above-average use in two thousand twenty-two has declined, shown declines in groundwater levels. But yet, our NRD is asking for funding from Mr. Barry Dekay to ask down in Lincoln on Monday, Tuesday, correct that, from, for taxpayers to dig. They are going to dig the new high-capacity wells in the same area that they put a stop to digging new wells in December of two thousand twenty-two. So it's gonna be okay for them to dig these new wells, but not anyone else. There has been a lack of communication with area landowners. Many area farmers don't know about these groundwater wells, including the proposed pipeline route that will be tearing up farmland, and the placement of the water treatment plant. But yet, they have time to come and attend your last month's meeting, asking for your support. There are ultimate solutions for getting sources of water that we feel that needs to be looked into. We are not the only ones. Um, I see my brother Terry was here, and he had to leave. He lives a mile and a quarter west. The groundwater treatment plant, he found out on the street, is that it's going to be across from his house. No one came and told him. He is looking at bright lights and big high fences, and they did not even come and tell him about it. He asked the farm place to the east of him. They didn't know anything, either. This will be a monumental engineering project with unknown ecological, environmental wildlife impact, and unknown human impact that will cause more long-lasting problems. The Nebraska Ogallapo aquifer may be abundant, but the damage a month of dry weather can cause is well-known by producers. When it comes to the future of food security, water is an essential component not to be mismanaged. Okay, so if you go there, this is the, you have a copy of the letter of our well that I was talking about, within these two test wells that they're talking about that have high nitrate. We have bought our drinking water for years. It's just Craig and I in the house, so I buy our drinking water, and of course, we're cooking, we boil it.
Can you clarify what concentration of, or what category is this, a high, moderate risk, or, you know, what, what are?
You know, you would have to ask the NRD, um, you know, about their, their formula, okay, Bob? I, you know, they, they, they send us letters that is hot, so then what we do is, you know, adjust.
Anything over there, you do not, okay?
Okay, so then you'll see, I have a few articles that I copied up that have been in the papers recently about Nebraska nitrate problems growing worse. The nitrate concerns for focus of public forum. Again, in your copy of paper last week, there was an article about nitrates on the front page. There's going to be a, uh, Tuesday, March fourteenth, at Northeast Technical College, there's going to be a question and answer type about nitrates. Then, Mr. Dekay, this was in all of our papers, he gives a legislative update, if you've noticed it in your paper. Towards the bottom, he is going to be LV seven sixty-eight, which transfers thirty million dollars from the cash reserve fund to support the development of the Cedar Knox Rural Water Project. It goes on, you know, you know where the whole project is, I am not gonna waste your time reading it. But, on the end, he says, "This funding will assist with the cost of developing a groundwater source and a treatment plant before the potential increase population and infrastructure due to the Starworth Project proposed in Northern County." To me, he is all worried about developing down by Wygon and the more boat docks. But to this day, they tell us they can't take the water like they do out of the Missouri River because of sediment. They tell us that in years to come, it's gonna be all filled with sediment, you're gonna be able to walk across it. So why are they asking for money to develop Wygon and add additional boat ramps, more campgrounds, more RV parks, when there's sediment going on in the river that no one is fixing? And he's going to be asking for thirty million on Tuesday in Lincoln for the funds. There is a meeting tomorrow in Hartington at the VFW, if anyone would like to attend. Uh, one more, couple more things. One more, couple more things here. I won't bore you with everything that I've read off. This is from the Flatwater Press. Where is it the worst? Sky-high nitrate levels appear to be particularly threatening to Nebraskans living near river valleys in central and northeast Nebraska. Sorry, I didn't make it up. This is how we found out also. It was in the copy of paper. This is how they thought they were telling everybody, just with a little map and about nine sentences. Currently, South Dakota at the Corps of Engineers, they are working on getting rid of the sediments out of the river. They are trying to find resources to that. And this is from the Yankton paper dated October 29th of 2022. So they are working on it. We are told that they don't want to take the water out of the river anymore because of too much sediments. Okay, I have, just to show you where I am getting all my articles, they're all from like the Norfolk paper. Nebraska's Nitrate Growing Worse. This one here is a full-page article about how nitrates can get into your well water, and how they are hard to get rid of. I guess what we're proposing is that there are other resources, other ways that they can get water for this project, other than taking the groundwater where we have livestock and lots of fertilizer use. And not that anyone is doing anything illegal. It's off, but it's just the way it is. And I have, I mean, I could go on and on, and I won't. I have articles. I'm not making it up. Yeah, and I won't, I won't go through it. I won't bore you with it. If you want any of them, you sure can have them. I'll turn it over to Craig, and he can tell you his side.
Okay. Going back to the meeting, I was down getting a new chemigation certificate down in Norfolk. I asked the instructor down there, "How's the nitrate moving groundwater?" And on the site that they're purposing to drill on, there could be no nitrates or low nitrates at that time. But the more water's coming from side to side, and nitrates could move into this area again. And nitrates, he said, will move from 60, 10 miles away. Okay? There's no way of really knowing where the nitrates would come from. But that's because it wouldn't be out actually becoming a crush. Just, you would think, well, it must be coming from the next field. No, when water's moving underneath the ground, all right? Going back to, they drilled a well on this south, south site for me, two miles away. They drilled a 300-gallon well there back in the fall of 2011. In 2022, in May, when we had our first meeting and say they were gonna start this project, they, I asked them, "Okay, if you got that well drilled, why don't we do the test in July, when we're irrigating and find out what's going on?" They did not really want to do that because they call it splashing. When somebody's watering, the water's gonna move in the soil. I said, "Well, it'd be nice to do it because at least you'd be able to find out if there's nitrates moving." They said, "No, we're gonna do it at the quiet time. We're gonna do it in the fall, October, November." I said, "All right." That time coming past, and they did not do no tests last fall. They had this well drilled for over a year, and they did not even test it. On the other side of that is, the, from that, from this city, the city well is back in the 70s here. South of town, they used to get water from there before the Rural Water Project started. Nitrate's got to hide. From that site to this new well site they're playing is only four miles away. Okay? One west, three south. Only four miles away from a site that, that was producing water for a number of years coming to Crofton, and then the nitrates got too hot. So they abandoned it, and that's how the rural water started. Okay? So I live in between the two sites, which was already documented. And on the last meeting at the NRD, they said that they were gonna have to maybe increase the water rates 25%, okay? And then they, they talked about the new seven wells, test wells they're gonna drill on these two different sites. One's a couple miles south, and the other one's three to the west. So they're gonna drill these wells. But on this site where this one was never tested, they're not gonna drill the wells there. They're gonna go to the west of there. I don't know if they know something on this one well that they don't want to test, test pump or what. But anyway, they're gonna go to another site. Not all the seven wells on the south side. They're, they're into two different sites. And all I could hear from a board member that actually spoke about this, with this 25%, because there's gonna be additional costs coming up, that he said, "All we can do is hope for a good well, that our costs won't go up." So that's where I'm gonna leave it. They're hoping for a good well, and they're drilling new test wells just to find this out. Okay? That's, that's the information that I heard at the last board meeting in February of 2023. Thank you much for your time. Any other questions, too, you know, I can try to answer.
Has the NRD or somebody tried to go down by the river at all, trying to?
I heard, that was the first thing they said in our main meeting, that, that the, they say they got these quality wells all over, and they probably don't have literature for everybody. But we were in between places where they drill well, and they put in a second one there to try to find out what, how much volume. Some of the wells don't have enough volume, and some other ones test nitrate. Down by eight, there's one there, and that's poor water. But when you go down to where Yankton, when they went underneath the river, there's all kinds of water. All they say is, they couldn't make a deal with Yankton. So I do not know, but it's been over two years since they've done that. That was in 2020. So they didn't even try the last while to even try to make a attempt. I, I mentioned the Bon Home Water, and they said, "Well, it's, it's gonna be too cost-effective." The whole thing is, from this one site to south of me, that's 18 miles to go all the way up to the water tower. That's 18 miles, they're gonna go all that far. I just think they could use their water and a better, their money for a better situation. I'd rather have them pump the water closer and use the water to try to dredge the river out. But anyway, those, those are my comments. I mean, if there are any other questions, please? Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Craig. One more thing I should want to add. Tonight, when I stopped with Dylan with gas down here, there was a pickup, and it was Mark Cedar Knox Rural Water. So I went over to the seller and started visiting with him. I said, "Well, what are you doing with boots on in this cold day? What is your?" "Well, I'm trying to figure out where we have a big leak. For a long time, we've had a leak, and we're trying to figure out where it's at, and we can't." I said, "Well, where do you think it's at?" "Well, we think it's down by St. Alina." But he said, "We were up at some plant trying to get this figured out, and he said, 'It's been a long time.'" Well, I remember when we were at the July NRD meeting, they talked about leaks. Then I said to him, "Well, what are you talking about, leaks? Is that just like a little pinhole leak?" He told me, "They are losing 100,000 gallons a day." I asked him to repeat it, because maybe I don't hear right all the time. I said, "Did you say $100,000 dollars a day?" He said, "No, I said 100,000 gallons a day." He repeated it two times to me, because I made it. And then I asked him, "So is this all you do, is work on these leaks all the time?" "No," he said, "I'm a farmer. I live south of Fordice." The head of the Rural Water Project does not have an engineering degree. He used to be a farmer, and now he trucks and has several other occupations.
I was just wondering, I-
What do you want to question?
When you said that the well that you wanted to test when you were farming, and you said they hadn't tested for a year, did they ever test that well? Did you ever have results of that?
That's their water that she handed you to receive there.
Oh, okay.
That was from-
So they did, then?
This, this here well, yes. This here well sits two miles to the north of one of the proposed well sources. And three miles, it's three miles to the east of one of the other groundwater sources. A bit, I'm trying to say, but this well sits right in the middle between those two wells. And there are other people's wells after that have high nitrate, but I am not here to speak for them. I am here to speak for us.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I got it right.
Okay.
Thank you for pulling up very much. Appreciate the information.
Oh, okay. And here, these, Pat Crumberg, she lives two miles. Emily Hennig, she lives in town here, plus she has land next to the wells, and you know, David Schumaker does also. So I don't know if they're able to say anything, or- Okay.
Right here.
The first thing that any of us farmers knew anything about is when six of us landowners that connect to the land where they have dug two test wells and two observation wells, we were notified by letter that these wells were dug, and that we were to stay, if we were going to dig a new well, we would have to stay a thousand feet away from that person's fence line, not the well, the fence line. So it really put an option with a lot of us that what we can't do, but they can do. That was for two years. About a year later, we got another letter saying it was extended another year. And that, and when we asked the NRD why it was such a secret, they told us that they didn't intend it to be. But nobody come around, nobody made phone calls, no letter was sent out that any of this was being done. So you consider that a secret, or is that lack of communication? It affect, it doesn't affect just us six landowners that land connect to there. That aquifer is huge. It, it goes northwest, east, and south. Everybody is affected by it, and the city is gonna be affected by it.
So are you guys afraid that if they dig a well out there that you won't have enough water for your farm and your operation? Okay, thank you.
I'm Pat Crumberg. There are people south of us, just across the highway, that they pray every day that when they go to their faucet, they even have the water. To the west of me, the irrigations, they can't run two irrigations at once. They have to watch, you know, when they turn this one on, when they turn that one on, they don't have enough water. So, and also, I don't know if they said anything to you about the 900 units that the NRD has. Okay? And it took several meetings before they came out with it, before we knew what they were talking about. Okay? St. Alina, the whole, the town is one unit. And I looked, you know, I Googled, and it says 90 residents. And that was back for 21. So St. Alina is one unit, Obert is one unit, Crofton is one unit, Fordice is one unit. Each one of the campgrounds, Travis Barney's, one unit. And they're gonna add on again, I guess. Ashoff, one unit. Up at the Meridian, one unit. So we're talking way more people here than they're letting people know about. So, and what's gonna happen to Bloomfield's Fire Department? Are they gonna have enough water? I live, it's right at a mile from the one well site. And we got a letter from the NRD that at the Knox County Fair, they did the test. Someone close to us was over, way over the nitrates. And they said that we needed to test our water. So I took some water into Bloomfield when they had the testing in there. Ours is testing 9.6, so borderline. Somebody that lives just to the north of us, he was just at our place three days ago. He said his is testing the same thing. And his place and our place, this well is right between us. So, but yeah. If this goes through, we're in big trouble. Very big trouble.
Here's another thing to touch on, is the fact that it's super secretive, beyond secretive. And, you know, we confronted them about that, and their answer was, "We did what the government asks, the state of Nebraska asks," which is like beyond minimal, like that stupid little note they stuck in the newspaper. And they don't communicate, they don't talk to anybody, you know? Yeah, it's just, it's a super shady, you know? And the nitrates thing, we've been down that road, you know, with the old city wells, yet they want to drill right next to them again. You know, and then we started looking up and down the entire river, and we noticed how everybody's taking water from underneath the river, and they're, they're heading into their states. And here, these guys want to go out there, and they want to bring the water towards the river, just ass backwards. And you look at like Sioux Falls, South Dakota, they took pipe all the way to Sioux Falls from Vermillion. Now, just this year, they purchased water rights again because they want to take water, more water, to Sioux Falls. Not only that, they want to take it to Madison, South Dakota. They want to take it into Minnesota. They want to take it into Iowa. It's just, and you just look up and down this entire river. Everybody's going from the river and taking it in. And you know, and you look at these guys, and they just totally backwards. It just, it doesn't make any sense. If you look at common sense-wise, this is the other direction. So.
It seems like the Missouri River is good for South Dakota. Brinkville uses it, Yankton uses it, Vermillion, Sioux Falls. But we want to go south of town and take out agriculture. And that's what Nebraska, the state of Nebraska is an agricultural state.
When we had went to the June NRD meeting, and we were there to voice our concerns about the use of this groundwater out there, a board member from the NRD told us, "I don't know what you're all worried, so worried about." He said, "I'll be dead by the time you see any results from all this, and so will you." And, and they were there, they all heard and say that.
Well, thank you, and I do appreciate, you know, your input in there. Definitely taken into consideration, and do appreciate your time.
Yeah, okay.
And you, you have-
And thank you for letting us have a chance.
That's fine. We just, we need more information. And this is the only way to get information and learn is by listening. I appreciate you coming and sharing. Thank you very much.
One more thing, there was a meeting with the Knox County Board of Supervisors up in Centerville, and if you knew about that. The word got around, there were about 80 to 85 people up there in that courthouse listening to what's going on. They didn't even let Knox County Board of Supervisors know what was going on. In fact, two of them, I was a 70, something about it, and kept it quiet.
And the NRD was asked to come to the front of the courtrooms to face the people. They wouldn't even go to the front. They stayed in the back.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, with that, the next item of new business is that the city has received grant from the Senior Community Service Deployment Program. Yay. So we're currently have one person that has successfully applied and met all the recommendations or requirements to be part of this. It's actually called ABLE program, ABLE program, which is, we're still looking and the city's looking for people that are income eligible, physically capable of helping out. It comes to us absolutely free of charge as your taxpayer dollars hard work. So we're looking for people from our community that, that are, I think, aged sixty-five. I'm thinking or older that are income eligible, that can, that want to. It's kind of a program to get them back into the workforce and provide additional income and provide benefits to the city. And it's not just limited to here. I'm working, gonna be working with Louise and getting hopefully the same paperwork for the cotton mill. But it's an opportunity to get people back into a workforce and generate a little revenue for them and then we've got to get the workers out of the process. Looking very desperately diligently for a helper in Dustin. So if you know of an ABLE body, elderly person that would like to help us, so his wife and Dustin could have a weekend together, fantastic. And so if you know anything, let me know. Okay, any questions about that? If not, moving on to, Mr. Weiser had a building permit which you've had opportunity to take a look at. I don't think we need official approval on that as my vote. If you have any concerns, you should let us know if you have a concern about that. Kind of gonna be the process going forward, I believe, that the building permits are submitted. They're still gonna go through Mr. Chase's, the Planning and Zoning Commissioner. But we are going to get, as soon as they make it through the utilities, then we're gonna get a copy of that building permit so we have an opportunity to take a look at it. And so if that process is okay, we will continue that process. Unless you have a concern or something like that, we'll just close that.
Would I, would I please continue?
Of course, yes.
This is for all of us. We have ninety-seven pages of regulations that have instructions about how to administer this process. In the past, we have done it if there didn't seem to be any one with the regulations. The mayor and I have signed a permit. To a degree, I'm not, I don't care how accused I am, but I'm not sure that it really makes all the sense in my head that we have to do that process. Now, if you want to change the regulations, that's, that's true. But how you want to proceed, it's up to you. That's, that's a thought.
Would you like to take a look at it? You'd like to see the little things?
Can I add to what Mike said? Can I add?
Sure.
Let's put it in circles for someone wants to put a fence in, okay? Needs regulations, might go through Mr. Chase. All right, he signs off on it, he's got the utilities. And this all happens three, four days after the previous meeting. And these folks would like to get this done in a couple of weeks because it works out. But they have to wait a month for the board to approve that's.
We're, we're not approved. We're just, we're just looking at it, just taking a look at it, just, just an awareness on our part. We're not looking for, I don't think we need to look for official approval, that's all we're doing. We're just, you know, kinda one of those. No, the whole letter is not, we'll begin to tell them, but it's approved by Mike. He's the Planning and Zoning Commissioner. He's the guy. When it makes his rules and regulations, not his, but it makes the city's rules and regulations, which are administered by him, if he signs off on it, I'm gonna sign off. Because I trust and value his opinion.
That'll be great.
Right. That's, that's fine.
He's empowered.
But we just wanna take a look at it and, you know, know what's going on and for the benefit of the cities. Thank you very much. Next item of new business, are there any questions? Is to approve a liquid license for the Unity Fish Cry on March seventeenth at St. Rose.
Who made that motion?
Motion made by Murphy, second by Pice, who called up Murphy. Pice. Okay, moving on, we have some committee reports, economic, and do you have anything for us this time?
We held our first meeting and there's, there's talk and things in the works for the DISGOLF thing. We'll know more at the next meeting.
Thank you very much. Mike, do you think about planning and zoning?
I just wanted to appreciate the fact that you clarified what I was understanding about the process. There are a couple of things that we need to work on in the process. One is the potential closing of Herman Avenue. Anybody know where Herman Avenue is? The intersections of Sharon Street and Highway one twenty-one. There is a proposed road that could go north from Sharon Street and south from Sharon Street, just there north of the school. And lies right next to the highway. So our proposal will be eventually that this be closed and the property returned to land.
We talked about that last year. We talked about that. What did we discuss? What did we decide? Anything?
I had a note with the lawyer to tell me who gets all the property because there's only one landlord. See, usually when that happens, it's okay with the state, sorry. The state is fine. It's our job as a city. Secondly, it was deciding who, who got the property since there's just one landlord involved. I can't imagine any other solution but to go to the land. So that would be the two property owners, the sailors and the tramps on the north side of that intersection. And the south side of that intersection. So the state doesn't care. It's, it's a city choice. Really, we would love to have an exit off of one twenty-one at the, was the Becker, now the Merkel property. And that's still, still trying to find out what to do there in the process. The other thing we need to be following through on is getting our, I think we've, well, that's, that's it pretty much. So we've already gotten approval on the zoning for the north's.
We did, do we sell it to them or give it to them? I mean.
Typically, it would be a gift. But that, that is my understanding.
Willfully maintained by both those landlords.
For years. Whoever's loan, owned the land previously, whatever. But yeah. And I'm, I'm open, I mean, it's not my job to decide, but that's my understanding.
I think we talked to Mike about it. I mean, like you said, they, I didn't know there were roads until I got on the board. The city owned it. I don't know what the purpose of that was anyway.
It was to build a sidewalk or?
Well, most of it was to build an access.
Far too early.
Yeah.
Front end road right there.
Yeah, that was the initial.
Go where?
So you don't have to get on.
It was put in place because the state would allow any access to its properties.
To that property back there.
The state is willing to allow one access.
Yeah.
On the Merkel property.
Yeah.
That has been discussed. The cost of that would be roughly, well, when we priced it, it was sixty thousand. I'm sure it's.
Hundred thousand.
It's more than that now. That was a year or so ago. So I'm sure it's probably eighty or more just to get off the highway with an approved arrangement. That was engineers cost, I mean engineer, figures prepared for us at that point. So anyway, there are some things to think on. You've got other things to think about too.
Have you gone to Mike about that?
Yeah.
With the legal certification.
Right, if we can give it away, we'll talk about it. So I'll gather some more information. Thank you very much. Yeah, we'll go ahead and put that on. Discussion of what should be done. Herman Avenue.
Then if we decide.
Okay, with that, I don't know if there's Cemetery Board or Tree Board represented here tonight. If that's not the case, we can move on to administrative reports by our city clerk.
Well, I gave you some paperwork. I wanted you to have a full workout of exactly what deposits came in. February is a small month, so it's only six pages, I think. You got to see exactly how I take the payments and deposit them. You also see revenue that comes in from the state and from our grants. It's all in there just to give you an idea of how it comes in. I had said that when I did up the claims, I was really excited yesterday because it was our first month that we actually brought in more money than we spent until I realized and found out thankfully from John that we had not paid for the police cruisers back in November. So that got put on there and it threw it just a little bit under how much money we brought in this month. But it was really encouraging that we're getting the taxes paid out and all of our penalties taken care of. And eventually then they'll also go back to being normal and money will be coming back in. You also got just the front cover of the bank statements. So that you can see what each bank got this month or February. The other thing I wanted to tell you about is that Chantel, I swear, is just amazing. She has worked endlessly with her QuickBooks to get everything closed up and everything reconciled and taken care of. It's been a hard, I'll tell you, just a hard road to go. Also, we're almost done with the audit. They're slowing down with things that they're asking me for. We've been very lucky in being able to find what we needed to give to them. And I, I will tell you that they told me yesterday that I'm gonna get written up for one thing and I told him, you go right ahead and write me up. It happened to nineteen twenty, or twenty twenty-one, I wasn't here and everybody in town knows it. So you can just write up what you have to. And he kinda didn't know what to say for a second. He said, what? He said, I'm not responsible. We're working so hard to make it work now. So you go right ahead, you write up what you have to, put down the truth. I said, the next time you're gonna find a really good audit. So we're working hard at that, getting it done. So it's getting close. That's what we've been doing. And I still have a hair I haven't pulled off yet. Oh, and we did get a new coffee machine. I should tell you that. Coffee machine came today. The lease was up on the old one. It's actually a dollar a month cheaper than what the old one was. And I haven't wanted to shoot it. Only had it a couple of hours. And I haven't wanted to shoot it, but I, I did wanna shoot the other one. So other than that, that's pretty much what's happened this month.
Questions? Yeah, just a minute. Moving on, Mr. Carter, do you have anything?
I'll give you the.
Stat sheet for the report?
Yes, sir. Just in summary, there's a total of about twenty-one traffic stops. Most of them are stop sign violations. People still don't know what the S T O P actually means. The wheels have to stop turning. You know, when you take your driver test, there's a three-second rule. When you stop, it's supposed to wait three seconds, it's both ways, shake it like a game bingo. But they're learning. And, well, the other thing, we had just two domestic assaults. We had eight nine-one-one calls. Most of them were child abuse neglect. It's kind of the same family, just going through the, some things, some child custody things, so, but they're not necessarily violent. So that's been really good. And then we had, well, we have four ongoing open investigations right now. On Thursday, March ninth, there's gonna be a public safety meeting at the senior center at six o'clock. And I will be making a presentation there, talking about phone scams and door-to-door scams because as the weather breaks, gets warmer, those things around the country are starting to be pretty prevalent in smaller communities. So I wanted to just give out folks to hit us up on some things to look out for. We're gonna talk about counterfeit money because people are not just counterfeiting the fifties and the hundreds anymore. Now, they got smarter. They've been doing this a while, but they're doing five and ten. So I'll show folks how to recognize that. There has been counterfeit money passed here across as well. Usually when people get it, they'll take it to the bank or the bank calls us. Or in the other areas, banks, they'll call police department, we send it to Secret Service down in Omaha. Also, also we're talking about personal safety. When people leave the area, they go shopping in other places because they don't always just do the shopping here in town. Some things to look out for, there's concealed carry tips. It looks like that the legislature is probably gonna get passed the concealed carry amendment, which Nebraska would be like other states around us, that it'd be a constitutional carry. You won't actually need a concealed carry card anymore. So it looks like if that is gonna pass, it has quite a bit of support. So if that passes as of July first, a person won't need a concealed carry card. But just be aware that anybody who is not a prohibited person will be able to carry a firearm concealed. And they don't need a card to do that anymore. As far as the grants, I'm gonna butcher this woman's last name because it's German, but her first name is Tabitha. I'm gonna just say Van, Van Pulp, Van Peet, Peet, something like that. But she is the woman from Lexington that's working on our grant. She called me yesterday and she sent me an email to confirm that tomorrow they're gonna go ahead and do the final submission, which includes our radios, the body and the car cameras, and also the office's salary for two years from the crime commissioner. So that's done. And Mr. Murphy was designated as the, as the person that's overseeing those grants. So you should be receiving some correspondence from her with confirmation within the next, obviously, ten days or so. And her first name is Tabitha. And I'll also email you her information so when you get it, you'll recognize who she is. And I'll correctly spell her last name and give you her phone. All right, thank you.
Thank you, John. John, when is that meeting at the senior center?
That's Thursday night at six o'clock.
Okay, you know the billboard says the tenth, the one that's lit up down there, it says on the tenth.
Well, it's Thursday night because that's the night where they have their meals, where they serve their meals. So I was gonna do it because they invited the public, the people in town to come eat with them. I think it's eight dollars. Sometimes they have meatloaf or whatever. So it was gonna be on Thursday and after dinner, we will have the safety class.
Oh, yeah, you mean when it says the tenth. Flashing.
Okay.
Says the tenth. And I was like, oh, okay. But it is the night.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's this Thursday, this Thursday.
Okay, thank you, John. With that, moving on, Dustin, you have anything?
Not a lot. I've had two water leaks within the last couple of weeks. One you guys I'm sure all know about. So for some reason, our water usage looks kinda high this next month, that's why. I had an online class actually for some continuing education today that I went through with some new lit law stuff coming into effect. It's mostly inventory stuff. Maria from Midwest Labs showed up yesterday and today to do sewer samples for us. I'll be expecting results for that sometime soon, hopefully. Other than that, alls I've got is I replaced one of the backup pumps down at the lift station in the sewer plant.
Thank you. Any questions?
We don't have a generator, right, Dustin? We don't have any like that.
Not anything big enough to run something like this?
Okay.
Yeah, there's a generator down there, but it don't run nothing.
Doesn't run much?
It's gas and you had to keep putting new gas in it all the time. It'll run. We've had, I had it started.
Will it run something?
It'll run whole plant.
Do you have one over the fire station then?
No, it's down here at the sewer plant.
Oh, sounds.
That's all, that's all the thing the city's got.
So the fire station really could use one. As well.
I'm surprised they don't have one.
Well, we have one, but it's. It's not enough to run both them buildings.
Does the fire station have? I'm sure it's not right.
I don't know. Okay, additional questions about that? If not, a couple of things to update for, for me is that, um, I neglected to have Tony Tramp on the Planning and Zoning Commission. That was Northside, and Mike Harden, and also Jesse Reese was here, was here most earlier, was also on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Laura Marshall has chosen not to be at this point in time on the Planning and Zoning Commission, because she, is that right?
Yeah.
She has ten thousand things going on. With that, also, I'd like to, uh, I'm gonna put it in the paper, whatever down the road, but Mr. Pike's, Councilman Miller, and myself were all in Lincoln on Monday and Tuesday at the Nebraska League of Municipalities. And I would say that wasn't really an high-opening experience. I have not begun to go back through the information that we were trying to absorb, that you probably did a better job than I did, but it was just overwhelming. We obviously have some things that were brought to our attention that were agenda-wise and things that we're not doing right, some things that we are doing right, and then, uh, just some ways, some resources that are available to us that we have not been making, taking full advantage of for many years. So, it was a great opportunity, and I hope there is the council at some point in time. And Don and Chantel are required by law to, to attend some of this, and we did. There was budgeting things, lots of legal things, it was just a really positive experience and being able to network, go with other towns and communities and see that we're not by ourselves in some of these issues that were going through. But it was a very good experience for, for me and when. Ashley Leder? Oh, yeah, I forgot, I'm so sorry. But, uh, you know, go on record is, and with the city council, whatever, is that Ashley Leder received a recognition for her outstanding talents and creativity in Lincoln over the weekend, and just wanted to make official recognition of her and all the things that she's contributed to our town. As you all, obviously, obviously all know that are sitting in this room, is that our, our blue ribbon school that we have is, uh, a very valuable asset to us and our community and the future growth of our community. So, and young, and aspiring people like herself are, are just unbelievable, amazing, and their talents are greatly appreciated. And, uh, yeah, we gotta keep things going, schools growing, and towns are growing, so we can contribute and thank her for that effort that she does, which is, I don't know how many consecutive times they've won the, the USD marching band competition, but it's very, very good, excellent effort. Okay, Hank, the House? So, we'll need a motion to go into closed session to discuss pool wages. Um, at, uh, eight twenty-four?
I'll make a motion to go on a closed session to talk about, uh, pool wages.
I'll second that motion.
So, that'd be Mr. Pike?
Yes.
Mr. Woburn?
Yeah.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
And Mr. Murphy?
Yes, sir.
We are in closed session.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by, I second it, by... Woburn?
I sign it?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
And Mike?
I'll make a motion to increase to fifteen dollars per hour.
I'll second that motion.
Seconding that. Miller?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yep.
Pike? Woburn?
Yes.
Okay, with that, I believe we have a motion to...
I'll make a motion to, yeah.
Pike's my second.